Well, listen, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge to the flag. Very good. I'm sure he'll show up. Minutes of the May 18 meeting, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Absolutely.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have a motion to approve financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we are going to administer the oath of office to our newest, not necessarily our newest Elton police officer, but Gene, you're on.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Officer Brandon Williams to come forward. For Officer Williams was born in Philadelphia and graduated from high school in Sharon Hill, Pennsylvania, and he put himself through Delaware County's community college and obtained his actual 20 certification through them. And that allows him, we were able to get him there with a waiver for his entrance level training in New York 10, compared minds training at Caesar County Sheriff's Office through Carroll County Community College and the Sheriff's Department there in, I believe it's going to be in September. He is currently in field training, coming, I think hearing the end of that field training with Corporal Tom Finch and Brandon and his wife Brittany Anpley is here today with their children. They currently live in Pennsylvania and we just would like to welcome them into our evening family.
Very good.
I'm doing great. They gotta turn around a little bit. Somebody else there. You can have my ball head too.
I, Rob Williams, do swear a word firm.
That I support the Constitution.
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And to support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof. And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer.
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the constitutional laws of this state.
Brandon, we're gonna get you to sign this real quick and then we're gonna get a photo of us.
With the family?
And the family, we'll all get a photo. Okay, we'll get one up here, let's stand right here, if you guys want to stand up behind us or can you get us all here behind us? Here's, we all good? All right. I'll get behind you. Yeah, we're good.
Woo, woo, woo!
Now, you need to call and drink a water.
Yeah, that's...
For what's too far, about too short.
I'm standing on my own knees.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, we have ordinance 1-2023 fiscal year 2023 budget presented for adoption. At our last meeting, we introduced it for introduction purposes only and we were going to add the cost of living increases into the budget, but I'm going to ask the board to accept the budget as presented. And I will also state to you what we're going to do in our very first budget amendment, which is probably unprecedented to have a budget amendment so quickly. But first, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept ordinance 1-2023 fiscal year 2023 budget. So moved. We have a motion and a second. So I will say during the discussion, we were going back and forth with cost of living increases for our employees. We're still, I can tell you, we're still working on the step grades per se, but what I'm going to propose, that we take the average salary of the town of non-police personnel and we're going to use about a seven and a half percent increase for cost of living and it's going to work out to about $4,025 per employee and I think it affects close to 70 employees. And we're going to take that dollar amount and we're going to make it into a lump sum check effective the first week or two weeks in July. So there won't be any adjustment in the pay grades per se initially, but the cost of living will be paid in a lump sum check at the very beginning of July. So that's what we want to do and it'll be in a lump sum of $4,025 per person. Andy, you had a comment?
Yes, Mayor, I think, sorry to be specific, but I think that last time that this came up was 4,050.
4,050, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. So it was 4,050 and that's how it's going to be presented in the budget amendment the 1st of July. So that was my only other discussion, any discussion on this budget at all? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, budget passed, how do you like that? Okay, next up, oath of office for the one and only mayor of Elton.
Rob used to be an electrician too.
That's the worst location of anything.
Okay, please repeat after me. I, Rob, do swear a word firm.
I, Rob, also swear and firm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And I will.
The best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of mayor.
Execute the office of mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Thank you. One more term. I feel official now. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Okay, well, with that, I'd like to invite Gene Vermel down here.
Thank you.
First swearing in, if I could.
Better get where Lou uses.
All right, Gene, I'd like to ask you the ratio. I, Gene Averman.
I, Gene Averman.
Do swear and I, I do swear that I will support.
I do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
The state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of commissioner.
Execute the office of commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
We need to condense that now. Very different. It's a little different than the police, and I kinda got that down. Do a little, couple of curveballs.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Mr. Robert Masmianno. I was, I was really going into this, I was gonna keep reading and not pausing. I can't do that. Please repeat that. I, Robert M. Masmianno.
I, Robert M. Masma... I, Robert M. Masmianno. I do swear that I will, I do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Thereof. And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill.
To the best of my skill.
And judgment.
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of commissioner.
Execute the office of commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
You want your, you wanna get a picture, you need a picture, you and your son together or?
Yeah, my son and my brother.
All right. We swore Rob in a few years ago, but this is the first time he's been elected by the people.
Watch the court there. That's the court. I thought we broke the court.
Best thing Dornell has to worry about.
You know you're gonna be done next, didn't you? I could tell.
It's your presence.
There you go.
Very good, exciting day there.
Thank you all.
Well, listen, Gene, do you have something you want to say? You have something you want to say?
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for their support.
Rob, you have anything you want to say?
I really appreciate the opportunity to serve another four years and I hope to continue beyond that.
Of course, I wanted to thank everyone and, you know, it's interesting, my stepmom's here from Maine, the first time she was from West Virginia when she was here when I was sworn in, that young-looking guy up there on the, on the board and I appreciate my sister coming and my wife Alice coming because I wouldn't be able to do it without family, that's for sure. I would like to take a couple of seconds just to mention, you know, I wrote down all the folks that I have had to honor to serve with, you know, I had, when I served on town council, I had James Kraus, who just recently passed away, he was our mayor. I've served with Gene and Charles for many years and I stood, I was trying to figure out who we served with when we were all, you know, when I was first elected and it was Jesse Boyd. We served with Jesse for two years. Then I served with Joe Fasona, who eventually was elected mayor of the town. Served with Ed McEwen, who we just recently lost also. We served with Mary Jo Jablonski and Mary Jo was a staple for our board. Commissioner DJ Van Rinen, served with him and DJ served a short time with the board. Of course, it's always been a pleasure to serve with Earl Piner, one of my dear friends, and also Rob Masmianno. You know, saying all that, during my term, this is, this is gonna be my fourth term as mayor and I have to tell you, this is, I didn't serve with him. No, I didn't serve. There's a few, there's a few that I did serve, I never served with Gary Stork, I never served with Charles Hicks, John Berkeley, I didn't serve with them, that was sort of the window that I wasn't serving, but those, the ones I mentioned were the ones that I served with and I have to tell you that this is the best board I've ever served with and it means a lot to me to be able to work with you guys and I think that, I think a lot of people may say, you know, we are a team and we used to team Elton and I, and I say it that we disagree. A lot of people think that we don't disagree, we disagree a lot, but when we, when we all sit down and we meet with each other, we might, might see someone in town or I'm on the golf course with Earl on occasion, trying to get Charles out there to play a little bit, but he won't, but we do discuss things and it's for a better Elton and that's our outcome. I think about when I first served in 1998, we were preparing, preparing the town for Y2K. You know, think about that, we were preparing, it was like, Mayor, you're coming in and the town's gonna fall apart, the whole country, you know, the clocks won't work anymore, it's gonna be all over, so you know, you think about that. Then shortly after that, we had one of the wettest seasons we ever had in Elton, I mean, we were struck with Hurricane Floyd and it was wet, I mean, it was just that whole year, it was, I couldn't imagine, couldn't tell you how wet it was in Elton for that whole year, it rained like every weekend and then that winter, I remember freezing, there were sheets of ice in Elton in 1999, I think everyone that walked the streets of Elton fell down at some point. I fell down, I just remember falling down how thick that ice was. Then in 2000, it was a complete opposite, we had a drought. It was the worst, I think it might have been the worst drought we had. I still remember that the governor, Governor Paris Glenn Denning said that you can't water flowers, right, you couldn't water flowers and we were hosting the first time ever, the Babe Ruth World Series in Elton, Maryland and we had a drought and I remember I got my hands slapped a little bit because we did water those, you know, and we got into a little bit of trouble that time, right? Then, then after that, we had 9/11 hit. So you know, the impact of that first four years, serving as mayor, it was just like, wow, it was all at one time and I was a fairly young guy, you could see up there, I had, I had dark hair, I was looking pretty good and it about wore me down, now look at me. So let's take that 12 years away and now I'm in my third term and, and we get hit with the COVID, you know, COVID, the pandemic, it's, so I'm not sure what the next four years are gonna bring to the town of Elton, but I can say one thing, I don't believe that those circumstances that I just discussed with you could be, I think we've got all of it behind us, I think it's all, this, this group can handle anything if we handle what I just said to you and I feel with that, with all the confidence in the world. So that's my little words I wanted to say, but I also, I want to put it on record, this is my last term. I will not be seeking reelection in four years and you can, you can mail that in, so it won't happen. Okay.
Do you remember when we first ran, myself, you and Joe at the polls, it was a tie, tie, tie.
It was.
Cause everyone inside and counted the absentee votes and I escaped by the record and he and Joe had to run again.
It was, so that was in 1994, so Charlie served 28 years and we were elected the same year. That's the most ever, I mean, we're trying to put all the numbers together today, I talked to Michelle a little bit about it, I want to, on our town website, I want people for the history of it to know who served our community and, and I know there's no doubt, no one has served as long as Charles Givens has served in our town. Jim Kraus was the longest elected mayor and he served 20 years and he's gonna keep that record because I'm only serving 16, I can tell you that. So, but Charles was right, I still remember it like it was yesterday, we, we all tied and we were like, when they were writing the numbers on the board, I think we all had 461 votes, I think it was, 461 and we're like, how is this possible? And then they start bringing out the numbers and then Charlie beat Joe and I and I really believed, in my mind, I thought I lost, I said, there's no way and then here it was a tie, how poss, how does that happen? A tie in an Elton election with that many people voting and I remember our council, Norman Wilson, said to us, well, we can do a coin flip, you can draw a straw or we can have a runoff election and I can tell you, to do it over again, I would have been okay with a coin flip. So we ran through and I was fortunate enough to edge Joe out in the runoff, but it was all good.
It just shows every vote counts.
Every vote counts, it does. Well, thank you guys, thank you and wonderful thing. So with that, the next up on the agenda, we have a petition for annexation and it's being presented for approval. Lou, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, the annexation is by XE 101 LLC and E3 LLC, I think that's the Homer Justice's group and the parcel, the parcel that's subject to annexation today is parcel 504 of 33E, 0.29 acres located at 218A Whitehall Road, the house I think is under construction by Homer and they're positioning for annexation in order to get utilities and I would, I would recommend that the board accept their petition for annexation.
We have a motion to accept, let's see, is there a petition number, is this the A2-2022? I'd like to have a motion to accept A2-2022 presented for introduction. So moved. Sorry. Motion and second, any discussion on this? I think that prior to the meeting, Gene actually brought up a good point, this is a parcel that is on Whitehall Road, it's before the, it's after the first entrance into Holly Hall Terrace, but it's before the second entrance into Holly Hall Terrace and it's prior to the Holly Hall Elementary School, it's under construction now. We would love for all of Holly Hall to eventually annex into the town of Elton because if we accept this annexation, then our trash company will actually kind of go out of their way a little bit to pick up one house of trash, for example, and then swing around, not a big deal, but it, it would be nice if we had that whole row for our town trash collection to be picking up, but I understand why they're doing it, one, they, if you're in town of Elton, your, your water and sewer rates are in half, if you're out of town like Holly Hall and Elwood Estates, you're paying double the rate. So I would recommend everyone being into town of Elton, quite frankly, then you have a right to vote, you can vote for this good-looking group up here. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, because the petition for annexation included the resolution, resolution provides for the public hearing, for that, after the public hearing, it can be adopted and once it's adopted, it can be effective within 45 days afterwards, so that covers that. The next item I have is proclamation 29. Okay, proclamation 29, Mayor Commission of the Town of Elton proclaiming Juneteenth in the Town of Elton, whereas on January 1st, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation declared that all slaves shall be then sent forth and forever free, that the executive governor of the United States, including military and naval authority thereof, will recognize and maintain the freedom of such persons and will do no acts or acts in oppression of those persons or any of them, any efforts they may make for their actual freedom. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, the last vestiges of slavery fell in general, Worden Granger delivered and read the General Order Number Three in the remote area of Galveston, Texas, declaring that all enslaved people in Texas were free. And whereas whether fall in mid- May emission, Freedom Day or Juneteenth, this day is marked by a celebration which began in community churches in the South and for which has grown throughout the United States. Whereas while our country has come far from the oppressive days of slavery, we must continually recommit ourselves to recognize that we are all children of God and equal in His eyes. Whereas the words of Reverend Mark Luther King ring as true today as they did nearly 16 years ago, we must learn to live together as brothers who perish together as fools. Now therefore, on behalf of the Mayor Commission of the Town of Elton and the citizens of Elton, under the authority vested in me as mayor and the Town of Elton Air Right, declare 19th of every June, Juneteenth. And the Town of Elton encourage all citizens to recognize the price paid by those who spend their lives in slavery, those who fall against it, to raise their collective voices against injustice.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P29-2022, Juneteenth. So moved. Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
No, I think that the proclamation was well done because the words in there pretty much states the way the world is going right now, it's that we, all people must come together, brothers and sisters, we're going to flourish like pools and, you know, you see so many things right now, just Jones, that's the way the world's going, but we hope not, but well written.
Charlie, you always say the right words.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I have three Elton Alliance alcohol beverage restriction waivers, I'll just, I'll read all of those one time. I'll read all of those at one time. On July 8th, 3 to 8 p.m., downtown car show, Red White Brew event, from 17, 117 to 118 North Street to Main Street, 107 to 109 West Main Street to Fort House Plaza. And August 12th, from 3 p.m. to 8 p.m., downtown car show, corn fest event, from 117 to 118 North Street to Main Street, and from 107 to 109 West Main Street to Fort House Plaza. And last, but not least, Fall Fest, September 16th, 3 to 8, September 17th, 6 to 8. Fall Fest will be the same parameters, 117, 118 North Street to Main Street, 107, 109 West Main Street to Brute Lane. I recommend that the alcohol waiver be granted to the Elton Alliance for those events.
We have a motion to accept the waiver for alcohol for the events, Red White Brew on July 8th, the Car Cruise Corn Fest on August 12th, Fall Fest, September 16th and 17th, as described.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is Resolution R4-2022. I'll be, I'll just summarize it. The town currently charged 133, I believe, 20 on an annual basis in support of charged forward to the citizens who receive trash service. Under this resolution, the fee would raise to 144, for $36 per quarter for each, each certificate, each household that receives trash services. The Fortune Access Resolution effective July 1, 2022, increase the revenue to support trash collection services and landfill charges by the Town of Elton.
We have a motion to accept Resolution R4-2022, the disposal fee.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. And I can tell you that no one wants to have an increase in their trash fees. It's just one of those things. I mean, the cost of fuel, the cost of landfill costs, the cost, the cost, the cost. And we're increasing it, I think it's $3 a quarter is about what it is. So that's what it comes out to be. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have is Resolution R4-2022. I'll summarize that. Also, the town built the neighborhood community center. In conjunction with an $800,000 grant we received from the City Development Block Program, we had to borrow 2,800,000 from the sewer fund. And based on the 2,000, or 2,800,000 that we borrowed, the board had made a resolution previously that we would pay back under 240 equal monthly payments, that's 28,800,000. And we're going to change this to, again, payments on fiscal '24, which is a year from now, rather than '23, our current, that started January, I'm sorry, July 1, '23. We're going to start payments on that.
So we have a resolution to approve Resolution R5-2022.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. And just to clarify what that is, is we borrowed money from our sewer fund to pay for the neighborhood community center. We're going to delay our payments to ourselves for another year. And quite frankly, my goal is, we're going to, I'm going to ask the board at some point to forgive this loan altogether. But for right now, I'm asking us to prolong or just push the loan out for an additional year. That's what this is in regards to. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, report. I guess I'll kind of start the ball here on the ARPA funding a little bit. The town, we received over a million dollars in requests for the ARPA funding assistance from nonprofits. They were ranging from $25,000 to $509,000 per request. The board members, Commissioner Brum, Commissioner Massmiano reviewed the documents to determine whether the individuals' requests meant the Department of Treasury requirements for funding assistance. So you guys went through, and you went through, and you reviewed this and talked to us about it. There's, I want to say there will be some organizations that will be denied because they did not meet the Treasury requirements. But the ones that have, at this point, been approved, if I'm reading this correctly, there's one, two, three, it looks like four, that we can approve. But I, before we do that, I guess what my question would be, going into this, I kind of felt, other than the fire department, I was wanting to cap an individual request for $50,000 was the maximum. That's what I kind of felt.
I think that's what we would recommend.
Okay, good, good. You feel that way, Earl? Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and I think that there were some that was, could have possibly been eligible for more, but I think that for right now, we should just max it out at $50,000. So I guess what I'm asking, there's, it looks like we have approval for the VFW Post 8175. They would be approved for $50,000. The Cecil County Arts Council appears that we could approve them for $37,000. The Elton Little League, $50,000. And the Youth Empowerment Source, we could approve them for $50,000. Am I reading that correctly?
Correct.
If the board feels okay, we could probably move forward with this process? You guys good with that?
Yes.
Do we need a vote for these?
Should be on record.
Okay.
Because we'll have to account for those funds at the federal government.
Okay.
On record.
And what this money is, is the Town of Elton, for anyone that wasn't, not aware of it, the Town of Elton received American Rescue funding. And we received our first check, and it was over $7 million. And that money could be used for infrastructure purposes within the town, broadband, water and sewer, highway, roads. But it could also be used for helping some of the nonprofits that had taken a loss during the COVID, two years, and possibly two years from now, from still the effects of COVID. So we, as a board, agreed that we would take no more than a million dollars of that dollars. And if we could work it, where we could give some of our nonprofits, help them through these tough times, we would do that. The one dollar amount that we approved early on was $500,000 to the Singerly Fire Company. They made multiple presentations to us here at the town level. And in our town charter, one of our biggest responsibilities, that we're responsible for is public safety. And they were struggling. They weren't able to do their drives, their financial drives. The price of equipment was going up, and we were able to use that money, and specifically to be used for new equipment when it's needed. So that's what we did. So with these, most of these are declines in payroll, employee retention, mortgage rent, utilities, capital and operating costs, which goes right along with the U.S. Treasury guidelines. So I guess I'd like to have a motion, and I'll just go ahead and list them again, and we'll do it all at one time. So I'd like to have a motion that we approve the VFW Post 8175 for $50,000, to Cecil County Arts Council for $37,000, Elton Little League for $50,000, Youth Empowerment Source for $50,000. These four met the requirements. And so we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on these? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. I was made aware that, Lou, have you heard anything in regards to the opioid settlement?
No. I've got anything on that.
Okay, I actually met with the folks from Voices of Hope today, and I think that when we receive that opioid settlement money, I think that that's where we need to use some of that money to help our residents, I use the word "our" residents, to be able to help them through the process here, with counseling, maybe even facility help, you know? I don't know where we go with that at, but I think once we get that, that's where that money could be earmarked to.
Do you think there'll be certain guidelines for that money?
I absolutely believe that there have to be, and I think that that's one of the taglines that it has to be used for.
Yeah, this was rough. This one was rough.
Yeah.
To make sure that we met federal guidelines.
I know it was difficult. That's why Charlie and Earl put you guys on it.
I know why they did it.
We went over it with a fine-toothed comb. I tell you, we spent about an hour and a half going through it, and we made sure everything was, met the criteria.
Okay.
God, no one is that bad.
Okay. Can I ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So have we kind of set a deadline for this round? Because we don't have any, like, is this an open?
That's one of the things we talked about.
Yeah, we need to.
The board to set a timeframe.
Yeah, I think so, for application and approval and award.
I will tell you that nothing more has come into work, other than what you reviewed.
Do you think we should have this round closed, or you think we should leave it open?
Could we close it June 30th?
That's not right.
Yeah, I would say we close this round, June 30th, and, because I can tell you, I knew that the American Legion had interest. I haven't seen anything from the American Legion. So let's give till June 30th.
And if I can ask a follow-up question. So for your second, do you want to wait until?
I think we.
More creative.
I think we got to wait until we make sure we get that second staunch.
That wouldn't be until August.
And then we would open it up again, maybe, from March to June of next year. How's that sound? You good with that?
Yes, just wanted to clarify. Once we have the applicant do this and recog it, they're not eligible to resubmit again for the next minority.
If they, at the end of the day, they're qualifying, that's why they can and cannot be eligible under these guidelines.
The reason why I'm asking that question is because I know that especially VFW, they get the money and use it, but they also give out to the community the funds that they receive. So that's the reason why I'm asking that.
And that's a good question.
No, no, I know it's not being used for that. I'm just.
If you give it to a third party and they redistribute it.
Maybe I have to reword that. I was just using the VFW as an example of organization that gives to the community. That's why I brought that up.
And I understand your questions.
Not this money that's being.
Correct, because very specifically, they presented, they presented very specific information about the costs associated, but they couldn't cover because of their loss in revenue due to the pandemic. And those things that they needed to cover.
Certain infrastructure.
Correct. And it wouldn't be, they're not going to be giving out to anybody else in the community. So those specific statements.
Thanks, Louis, for recognizing that, because I said it two different ways. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Thank you. I wanted to mention, I wanted to applaud Commissioner Rob Massmiano and his whole team for the fishing derby.
Yep.
My hat is off, I tell you. I think that a few years ago, we talked about having a little fishing derby down there, and I think we tried it, and we had maybe 10 or 15 kids showed up, and it was, to me, that was a success. But when you have 150 children show up, and the effort that you've done to be able to not only teach the kids how to fish with some classes down there, but also when they leave, they could also, I think you had enough gifts there, and maybe even give them a fishing pole. You know, as they said, if you can teach someone to fish, you can feed them forever, right? They can learn how to take care of themselves to a degree there. But it was a wonderful event. I wanted to thank all the staff that participated, all the volunteers that helped. I know I was in and out that day. My wife put me to work at the yard sale, but we were, it was a fantastic event. So I know you'll probably want to say a word or two about it here in a minute also. The Memorial Day Parade, once again, I think the parade was a home run for our community. You know, we're on that, we're going through it, and each day after that parade, we always have some discussion. I know it can be better. As great as it was, I still think this could be, Michelle and I had some discussions about, this should be the county Memorial Day Parade. It should be, we should have every municipality participating in this thing. And there's so much more we could do. Public Works, man, we could be bringing that shop vac through, or the vacuum truck through, and showing off our new backhoes. And our police department, we can show off a couple of those new police cars that we're getting, right? I think there's so much more that we could do with this. And get the Elton marching band going through there. I say all that, but then I get a little disappointed because we do this, and there's not a lot of action downtown for our businesses. They shut their doors on Memorial Day. So maybe that's a consideration, move it to that Sunday instead of the Monday, or vice versa. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just looking, asking for guidance. But I will say, it was well-attended. I think everyone enjoyed it. And once again, thank you for everything. And I want to thank General Hanley for, Dent Scansway, for making the Town of Elton float and giving us all a photograph of ourselves on the float. She does a wonderful job, and I know we have the best, did we win? Or were we allowed to win?
Yeah, I don't know if they allowed you to win this year.
Well, I can.
I'll check the list.
I can tell you, she does a fantastic job at decorating that thing, and it's wonderful. But that's all I have. Rob, you're on.
I would like to touch on the fishing rodeo briefly. As Rob said, it was a great success, even bigger than last year. I expect it to grow next year. I'm constantly thinking of new events and things that we can incorporate to keep the children entertained and encourage them to get outside. We did have 145 children pre-registered. Was that correct, Mary? And maybe 20 or so walk-alongs. And every child that day left with something, some kind of present, due to the generosity of many individuals of the town, businesses. And a lot came from the Toys for Tots Foundation. They said, just come, load up your vehicles with whatever you want. And we made sure every child went home with something that day. Very nice. I'd like to thank all the volunteers, John Downs, you were great, Chief, who else was there? Jessica, Dan, of course, and his team. There were so many people involved in this. It all started a few years ago when I bought a couple fishing poles for a couple of kids that are in my life. And I said, I'm going to take them fishing in the spring. Then I got to think of nothing. Take a whole bunch of kids fishing. And it turned into this. And it's just a great community event. I thank everybody for participating. It certainly wouldn't have happened without all of you.
Can I answer to that?
Yeah.
I volunteered last year and this year. And last year, being the first one, for those of you who don't know, volunteers would station themselves around the pond to help with families, kids, didn't know what they were doing, how to bait their hook, take fish or stuff like that. And there was a mom. And there was a mom that was there with this boy, she wanted to take him, didn't know anything about fishing. We were able to help and, you know, get him, show him how to bait his hook, take fish off. They came back this past year, this, this past one. He's out there, he's got his own rod, he's fishing by himself, baiting his hook, taking the fish off, having a great time, the mom's just sitting back there like this and she recognized us, she said, look, that's what it's about.
In a year or two, that young man will be one of my volunteers or instructors.
Yeah, it was, it was a good feeling.
Now, I'm going to interrupt you real quick because I had something on my mind about that. Lou, when I was out there, Sidney was out there, and I don't know if this is possible, but that water is probably two foot deep. Now, it's good and it's bad, it's only two foot deep, you know, but is it possible? Would we have to get a permit to dredge our own pond?
Absolutely.
A pond permit, is that what it would be?
I don't know, anything you touch involves the state of Maryland or the Corps of Engineers.
Could you, could you take a look at that and ask if we could take, and just make that pond maybe go from two and a half feet down to back four foot deep? Because it would allow them fish to live longer in that pond if it was just a little bit deeper? And then the soils, I think I mentioned to Dan or Sidney, they felt that we could put the soils right to the left in that, in that low spot. Now, I don't know if that's possible, you're the expert.
It's a hundred-year flood plain, so you can't put fill in it, but your, my task is to explore the possibility.
Explore. Would you guys be okay?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be filling, we'd be moving.
I'll tell you, that pond could use a good vacuuming, just like a little fish tank, remove the waste from the bottom, that would be a good thing for the health of that pond.
It would, listen, ponds all the time, they get serviced and that pond has not been serviced in-
They'd probably love it. Get the right organization involved and they would love it.
I couldn't imagine what we're going to find in that pond. You know, if it was, if it was actually drained out and, and-
It wouldn't be pretty.
It's not going to be pretty, there's going to be a lot of stuff found in that pond, but I think it needs to be done.
I, I think it would be great for the health of the pond.
Isn't there like a fishing game?
Well, it comes down to the DNR and the Corps of Engineers.
DNR, really?
Okay, that was my two, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay, it's okay, all good points. Now, beyond that, I made a phone call to Milburn Orchards a couple of days ago and I'm looking into organizing a hayride for the children in the fall. Apparently their largest area and their wagons will accommodate 250 people, much more than I thought, so that's in the works, more about that will be coming in the next few months.
And what are you going to call out of that?
Team Elton Hayride. I'm going to get all the same people involved and we'll take the kids for a hayride in the bonfire. I need to start getting donations from the community again to pay for the wagons, maybe some smores, this would be less than the fishing rodeo, but just as much fun. Maybe I'll get Jack Borickor out there to entertain the kids.
Be kind of neat.
Mm-hmm. Other than that, I've been busy answering questions from the citizens, you know, they have a lot of questions and sometimes I had the answers and sometimes I come to the board or the administration for the answers, but everything's going smoothly, I'm really happy that our team has stayed together, we've got huge projects in the works, I think it was important for us to see them through, so I really appreciate being up here. That's my report.
Earl?
Well, I, I really had a good weekend, I mean, I had a chance to hang around Rob for a couple of days. It's been kind of a challenge, but I never thought I'd learn something from them, but anyway, I, I really, really do appreciate, I went to Woodland and we had the memorial ceremony there, I went with Rob, Rob gave a speech and I thought it was one of the best speeches I've heard, going girl time, so requested him to do it here in the Town of Elton, so I heard it again.
Beautiful.
But it was a well-put-together speech because it's something that really actually happened to a person and sharing it with others, that's what it's all about, so thank you again, Rob.
Thank you.
The fishing rodeo, I was there, I went, Rob, on the deck, which is another thing.
Gator?
Yeah, gator, he tried to go to the edge of the pond where I knew if he was to go over, I would be a prince of the water, that's the only trouble, I had to, I mean, he sets me up too much. But I really, really appreciate all the things he's done this week as a part of the team. I had a chance to go to the event for the John video for the homeless, not homeless, I'm sorry.
Mental health.
For the Mentalist Month, which I thought was a well-put-together screening, it really gave a lot of information on stuff that I never even knew about health-wise and how people were really adapted to situations, but I really was really impressed with that. And our parade, I was really happy that somebody asked me to ride my motorcycle. I didn't really, I said, ride on the float, he said, why don't you go here and it was Al Miller and I said, oh, Miles, well, so I felt good doing that and I said, I didn't want to think I was trying to be single, but I'm so glad to get off that thing with you guys. Because they wouldn't give me room. They were crowded, no, I had a good day, sorry, I had a good weekend, so that's, basically, I just want to say thanks to them.
Very good. Charles?
I guess I echo a lot of the sentiments that's already been given, but Earl, you know, when I got home yesterday from the parade, my wife said, Earl wasn't riding with you all the day. Well, you was right behind the bucket. So a lot of people probably missed you, but I told you when they had-
I still can't understand why Earl won't let me ride with you.
I'm trying on the back of my bike.
That would make me angry.
And of course, the guy-
I would have enjoyed it.
The gentleman named Guy who works at the post office, that's, that's a joy of his life because he gets up there, even though someone handicapped him, then he ends his walk, he appreciates that, he just loves it.
What's his name?
Parks, Guy Park.
Park Guy.
Thank you, I couldn't remember.
In my mailbox was an envelope, I was, a thank you card from evidently Claire May, who was an enforcer for the park of the town and thanked all of us for sending her flowers for her retirement. Rob, yesterday, two young ladies stopped at my house, they were looking for the mayor, so I gave somebody else a chance to hear what I've been hearing over and over, so I put the phone to Michelle's ear and they still complaining about Douglas and Windsor Village. I know the police has done a tremendous job in circulating through that area and moved a lot of vehicles out of the way, but their problem now is they just have a massive amount of trice, some plastic bottles, streaming all over the street, the new development over there and they tried contacting the director, but she hasn't been not so good in helping them out. So they still have a problem, I don't know how to solve it, so that's something the board may have to discuss or someone, I don't know. And you should have gotten some pictures yesterday of the trice streaming all over the area. Michelle, what did you, what did they say to you, because I put the phone to you here?
Pretty much the same thing, the biggest issue, they said that the young people that are parking there are not violent or anything, but they're clearly loitering and then they have their snacks or water or whatever and then they throw them all outside onto the ground and such. And so they were saying about parking enforcement or loitering enforcement, they said that one, the third person, they didn't want to name her and she didn't want to get involved, she used to have a no trespassing sign that was taken down by somebody on her property and that was part of the problem, that they're intimidated and they don't want repercussions, but at the same time, there are people in their neighborhood throwing far children in the neighborhood.
And the last was a boy, I don't know who pays Earl's brother, Joe, he does a fantastic job up throughout Elton for the school, he does it here, we were over on the ornery roof, that was a year ago, he was filming us there, he did a tremendous job in presenting the film at Elton High School two weeks ago on mental health, it was a nice crowd, the film was absolutely great as far as I'm concerned, not only the feature of the events, but the color, the talk, it had an opportunity, that's right, you were there, it had an opportunity to present some of the workforces here in Elton and basically it allowing the young man named John, who you see walking through the street with the different colored costumes, well, to him, their clothing on his body, you know, he's been well-embraced in the community by the banks and a lot of people, but that young man has had some problems in his life and I certainly wouldn't want to be in his shoes, he never got a chance to know who his family was, he has moved around in New York, he's here now, he's still having issues when he takes his medicine, not taking his medicine and there's been organizations here who have also found him a place to live, a little, kind of a coterie they have, but also to teach him how to take his medicine and not take the wrong medicines, which he has done, but it'd be nice sometime in the board we think about, how do I want to put this, supplementing Joe for the work that he's done in the community because even now with the film that he's had, that film is going to be going to New York and I think three other places, am I correct?
It costs money, right?
It costs money, but anyhow, you know, Elton has actually depicted on this film.
All through?
All through the film, it's, in, in a beautiful way and certainly as that film goes forth and is seen by others, it's a good sign of Elton, it's not a bad sign and we should maybe appreciate that and maybe give him some type of compensation, but something to look forward to and that's it.
Like a donation?
Yeah.
I apologize, I didn't get to see the film and I'm wondering if we could get him to come in and maybe have another screening in here.
It would be well worth it.
I think we should probably do it and maybe it'd be good for all of our employees to see it and whoever else would kind of wonder if we could set it up upstairs, I wonder if that's possible. And we could take a look at that and see if we can get it set up there, maybe in the next couple of weeks and then I think if we all have that same feeling, I know after you saw it, you felt the same way and I know you felt the same way.
Yeah, I think the Town of Elton was extremely represented, well, represented.
Yeah, that's what I understand.
And he is kind of like our-
He's our John.
He's our John, because he is, this could go nationally, you know, or whatever.
There was representation from Philadelphia and New York at this showing, so, you know, it's, of course, they were teaching and they're doing mental things, but it's a good showing.
Was Earl in the picture?
One, one, one cameo.
One cameo, one second.
I didn't say that for me.
Photo bomb.
And you know, Mr. Koyner did not request assistance.
I know he didn't request it.
No, this is something that we, we thought should support.
We've entered into an agreement with him that we pay him per event when he films, like he was at the Memorial Day Parade, he was filming it, so he's done this now for about the last year and the, and the thinking of our board was, we're going to start capturing all these good events that we're doing and then when we do our marketing plan, you'll have all these nice events that you can show our community. We haven't compiled them all together yet in one, one mass piece, but he's, he's been collecting all the data for us and I agree, I think that we could, let's talk about this a little bit, Earl, what we can do. Gene?
That's good, thank you. Thank you, tell Laura thank you for the hard work, I have to agree, I think that was like the best float ever, you know, she repainted the whole thing, besides decorating it, put a lot of work into all those signs that were there, you know, bringing them back to life. She makes us look good, you know, so it's extremely appreciated.
Makes me look good.
Jessica, I don't know if it's appropriate time to do this, but I want to wish you well on your new venture. You have really served the Town of Elton over the years very well and it's much appreciated. I appreciate that you're going to remain involved in the alliance to some degree at least and I know it's for the good of the town, so thank you and good luck. The only other thing I wanted to ask for is on these ARPA funds, if we could get some kind of report or running total of what we have expended and what we have planned for expenditure, I'd like to know. It seems like every time something comes up, we're going to pay for them with ARPA funds, but I don't know what that-
I think Lou has that running total for us.
I would, yeah, I would just like to see that periodically as we move forward.
That's good.
And this is the best board ever, I truly believe that.
It was great.
You're the best mayor.
I was going, I was going to say that, but I really was, that was my next breath, was to say you are-
Who's the best parking commissioner here?
I love y'all and I appreciate all the hard work that you do and I'm so glad that we get along as well as we do, so thank you for that.
Okay, there was two things that I did have here and it was on the wrong side of the page, I wanted to, two comments. Gene Minner, thank you so much for your grant, we were able to receive $61,000 for the Elk Landing Project, which we're going to be able to, if anyone was down at Elk Landing and looked at the stone house, if you went inside during the last event we had down there, the fireplaces needed to be repointed, the outside needed a little bit of touch-up work, but $61,000 will go a long way for that building at this point and thank you. We had, Mary McGold, thank you again, Mary put in for a grant for playground equipment at the Neighborhood Community Center in the amount of $247,000 and we got the letter that said that it's going in front of the Public Works, the Department of Public Works, so we just now have to hope that Governor Hogan and Comptroller Francho and the treasurer are all voting in favor of it and we'll receive that check so we can have playground equipment around the community center, but that's fantastic. This is the time of the meeting, we opened up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the Town of Elton. Anyone have anything to say today? Yes, ma'am, come on up and state your name.
Hey, everybody.
Well, I don't have the microphone up there, so you can do it however you would like to do it.
Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm Jennifer Dirk, first I wanted to thank you guys for considering our application for the ARPA funds, as you can see, you got a snapshot in our finances and, you know, COVID did put a lot of strain on us, but we were able to meet that need by helping and, you know, the causes that the money has gone to are great, so thank you though for opening it up and allowing us to apply. So I wanted to share with you guys, as our tent at Voices of Hope, is to keep coming to give you guys updates on things that are happening and I just wanted to touch base that there were 443 overdoses in the 21921 ZIPO in 2021 and, you know, COVID, it really shut down the health department, shut down a lot of treatment providers and, you know, that's one of the results, so 443 overdoses, 30 were fatal, so thank God there was only 30, but if you look at that 443 number and compare it to the population of Elton, which is 15,653, that's 3%, you know, it's a lot and, you know, we're making a difference, you know, we're hustling to make a difference and just in May, I wanted to tell you that we did 41 treatment referrals with people, and that's just not giving them a card and saying, hey, go to treatment, it's like making sure that they get involved in the treatment provider and just May, we provide 67 transports to treatment or shelters, you know, we're really trying to work to get the message in with the hospital that please don't just discharge people out onto the street, call Voices of Hope, let us give them a ride to wherever they're from, we encourage you guys to keep spreading the word that people need help and to turn to Voices of Hope to fill the gaps and we, as long as we're funded to do so, that's what we're going to do and we want to have conversations with each of you about what you feel, Elton, Anshiesaw County. to have conversations with each of you about what you feel Elk and Annapolis County needs to address, selfless huge and, and our county, and our towns, because there's 443 overdoses, you know, it doesn't reflect the mothers and the fathers and sisters and the brothers, there's who are freaked out and scared and are going and looking for help, hopefully looking for help. And if you guys are equipped with the tools to say there is help today, at least try. And invite them to engage Voices of Hope, and then ask them, what was that like? And then let us know. We carry a lot of good stuff, we're rated high on Google, all that stuff, but we want to continue to get the feedback from the people who count. And I want to say thank you, there was two officers this past month, and May, who dropped all people, two Voices of Hope, and we were able to get them to treatment, which helps reduce incarceration as a method of trying to help people and not hurt themselves. So also, in May, we cleaned up our stretch of Route 40, we have an about the highway there in front of West End Gardens, up there in front of Hollins Worth Manor, so we cleaned all that up. Unfortunately, we're not allowed to clean the median, the State Highway Authority, they say you're not allowed to clean the middle, which is the worst place of all, right?
Right.
We're only allowed to do the shoulders, so for that, it stretches along the front of Wawa up to Enterprise and down in front of the old basics. And then we did show up and clean Hollins Worth Manor, it was like 12 of us, it was with me and Mr. Piner, and contributed to clean up, where we were able to get honor syringes from the playground area. So one of the things that Voices of Hope does is that we will come and pick up syringes, whether it's one or 1,000, you just call us and we will come out firmly that day and clean up the whole area. So please spread the word, that's important to us. And then I just wanted to do a shout out that we did win the top prize at the group, for the group.
There you go, congratulations.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out, okay?
And May, I'm pleased, and I'm not mitigating the tragedy of overdoses, please hear me very clearly when I say that, but the fact that 443 overdoses within 21921, that's actually 45,000 people are served in the 21921 area code, so I just don't want that bad publicity thinking that just Elk, and you have this crazy high 3%, 1% is way too much anyway, but I also wanted to get it on our video that 45,000 people are served in the 21921.
Well, I appreciate that, correct?
That's a very good point.
Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say for the good of the town of Elk?
Can I just add something?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to, you were talking about all these events that are coming up, our National Night Out, which seems to be coming almost, a county national night out, is going to be the first Tuesday of August every year, and so Target here, Target Bank are well on their way to this year's event, maybe.
So they'll have more than two weeks to get it going?
They do have more than two weeks, yeah. They've been working on it since they were surprised here during that one meeting, we told them it was a meeting about that. They've been working on it ever since then. And also, I know something very dear, near and dear to your heart, is the outstate tag enforcement. We put our first Facebook post up yesterday.
Solid.
The word is out. It's gotten a lot of, a lot of comments, it's generated a lot of comments, but you know, it's a problem, we know it's a problem, and we're asking, like I said, we'll do for volunteer compliance, and then we will, we're trying to get some, some tags from the state vehicle association so that we can put those on when we start doing enforcement.
That's wonderful.
Just an update on that.
Well, I can tell you, we appreciate the initiative on that.
I appreciate seeing on the posts that have it coming out from the Elk Police Department.
Yeah, it's great. Well, there was, there was, I think, over 100 shares on that right now.
Yeah, shares.
Yeah.
But, but everything, all different topics or situations, or, or, you know, help, you know, the wanted posters, they, they.
Yeah, well, we're trying, we, we, I think we can still do better about letting everyone know exactly what we are doing, but we are trying, and one of our initiatives was increasing our social media presence. Tracy and Lieutenant Waters have been the ones doing that, probably only Tracy. If you see something like on the weekend after August, use Lieutenant Waters, we do appreciate it.
And it's not all, it's not all like bad news.
Right, we don't want to say, it's not all bad going on.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Very good, meeting adjourned.